The board, it's 9:30 a.m. Today's Friday, May 1st. My name's Brian Zumwalt. I'm the Director of the County's Office of Technology and Innovation. I'll be playing the role of technology moderator for today's virtual meeting. On the panel with me is Don Crowell from the County Attorney's Office. He'll be serving as process moderator. Before we start this meeting, I'd like to do a quick roll call. Ensure that we have adequate communications for each commissioner. If you would unmute and just say present, we'll start with Commissioner Eggers.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Seal.
I'm here.
Good morning. Commissioner Walsh. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Long.
Here.
Wonderful. Commissioner Justice.
Good morning, Brian.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Peters.
I'm here.
All right, and Commissioner Gerard.
I'm here.
Madam Chair, it appears we have a quorum. I'll now turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, well, we have to take a look at our local state of emergencies. And Mr. Burton, would you like to start us off there?
Morning Commissioners. As you're aware, the Governor's recent order, which is 20-112, which is Phase 1 Smart Safe Plan for Florida's Recovery, becomes effective Monday, May the 4th. The plan allows for previously listed essential services to continue to operate. The new order, however, also allows many non-essential businesses to operate using social distancing guidelines, very similar to our previous Stay-at-Home order. The new order, however, does provide restrictions on certain services the Governor deems higher risk. It continues to restrict visitation at long-term care facilities and requires testing for the employees. His order still requires bars, pubs, nightclubs to remain closed. His order further defines non-essential services and activities to remain closed, including things like personal services. This would include barber shops, hair salons, spas, nail salons, tattoo parlors, massage places, and things like that. It also further restricts large gathering-type activities such as gyms, fitness, dance studios, movie theaters, concert halls, amusement centers, sporting and leisure activities similar to things that would occur in a large venues, arenas, or stadiums. Those remain prohibited. But the Governor's order does begin to relax many things that our citizens enjoy every day. It reopens restaurants, dining areas, with a maximum seating capacity and the building, from the building capacity at 25%. It does require the bar counters to remain closed, but allows for outdoor seating, which is without restriction, except for to implement social distancing requirements. His order also allows all permissible in-store retail-type services to open with a 25% building capacity. This means non-essential services such as car washes, dog groomers, and many other services can open using social distancing practices where applicable. Finally, his order allows museums and libraries to open with a 25% capacity unless restricted by a local jurisdiction. In all of this, the social distancing is the key and is required throughout any activities. This is part of our new normal. It's very similar to what you enacted over a month ago with our Safer-at-Home order. Based upon the Governor providing a relaxation to Safer-at-Home-type activities, allowing our businesses to begin opening with restrictions, but then keeping restrictions in the larger-type venues, which is the highest-risk areas for the spread of coronavirus. We have two resolutions before you today. The first resolution would rescind your Safer-at-Home order and your business closure order. We also ask that you extend your emergency order, which would include covering your, continuing your 50% pool capacity, playground closure, and the allowance for childcare facility playground equipment to continue, and also a resolution, keeping the resolution with opening the public beaches and beach parking areas. Based upon the Governor's order and a review of the requirements within it, we believe it's reasonable to rescind our order and just simply follow the Governor's order except for the areas that, again, I just outlined to you past last Tuesday. Based upon that, I recommend their approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Barry, I watched the Governor's press conference, and he said that he didn't close any businesses in his last order. And I understand you want to follow his order, but what I would ask is that you follow his order specific to everything he said. So he said gyms and fitness centers, but he didn't say dance studios. He didn't say yoga studios. He didn't say anything like that. And so can we just do his order like he said and not arbitrarily pick and choose who else can be open or closed? I think a yoga studio can keep 10 people and they can do six feet apart. I think a dance studio can do the same thing with just 10 people and six feet apart. Can we consider just reading his or enforcing his order based on the exact verbiage in which he said instead of trying to expand it? I guess that's really a question the Sheriff more than, more than you.
Well, it can be, it can be a question for both the Sheriff and I. We spent probably five hours yesterday going through this and trying to interpret how to apply it because he, the order specifically says a couple of things. It says things such as, and then it talks, and it gives you one or two examples. However, it also talks about the types of services. And so to try to provide it consistently, we've tried to say that those things that are like that, where you have lots of people coming in, I mean, for instance, on a gym, he could have said that gyms can open, but you have to implement social distancing. But he's seeing that as a higher-risk category. Well, that saying would apply if you have a class-type environment for a Pilates studio or another type of dance studio. So we felt that was a reasonable interpretation. Sheriff.
Yeah, so one of the things, Commissioner, we don't do arbitrary enforcement, okay? We take what the Governor has in his order. And what's more important than the words that come out of his mouth are what he writes down on paper. Because he didn't cover everything in his press conference that he put in his order and didn't say it exactly the way that it's laid out. So to raise it, we got to get in the weeds on this. Is that what he said in the order and that's the law, is that everything that has been essential services or activities remains essential services and activities and can operate in the same mode that they have been. Everything that is not an essential service or activity remains. Be clear about this. It remains an essential, non-essential service or activity except for what he says in Section 4 that can operate. And if we get in the weeds on Section 4, what it says is as to what can operate. Let's just, we're all clear with this because it's really important, is that what it says is retail storefronts for goods, and they can operate at 25% of their authorized capacity. So as the Administrator and I poured through this, we eyed this in the most liberally construed way to allow as many, many businesses as possible to reopen. As you can see and will see and you've seen in the guidance that we submitted and provided last night, there's only a handful that are on the no list because we can't get there. If we could get there, we got there. And we are really trying hard to allow as many as we can. But we also are required, we're obligated, to follow what he has in his written order and the spirit and the intent of that. So we are trying hard regardless of what we think and whether somebody, this is the problem we ran into over the last month. People apply common sense, logic. Well, they can socially distance. You could socially distance in a gym. So there's a whole lot of things that people disagree with, but it's not up to us to substitute our judgment for what is in his order. And we have to be clear, it's what his order controls, not what came out of his mouth at that press conference.
Right, and I'm looking at the order, and it specifically says gyms and fitness centers. It doesn't say dance studios. It doesn't say.
Because, Commissioner, because those were specifically excluded. So unequivocally excluded, but it doesn't change the fact that everything that was non-essential remains non-essential. And yoga studios are non-essential. And the only thing in the non-essential category that can open is retail goods and storefronts. So again, we're trying, really trying hard here, and then he went out of his way, if you will. And one of the reasons on the gyms, because they were not in the Safer-at-Home order. They were in a different executive order. So I'd suggest that the restaurants and the gyms and some of those things that he specifically called out are not part of the Safer-at-Home order. They're part of previous executive orders, and that's why they were called out separately.
Sheriff, I hear you, but I would love to see if you could just be a little more flexible and generous versus restrict it on that. Because, you know, like I said, he came out and said he did not close any business down. He came out and said that. He said municipalities closed them down. I said that they could be open, but that's not what we interpreted. And so I'm just looking verbally as if we just do exactly what he says, then that is more flexible.
So I would just. Commissioners, if I could, before, one of the issues is, as we know, this, the Governor's orders have been very difficult to interpret, and we've had to apply some judgment to that. It's not perfect. We're making the best we can out of it. Our recommendation here is for you to rescind your business closure order, which would simply allow us as staff to interpret the Governor's order and make those types of judgment calls rather than getting into the weeds on each type of issue. I will tell you, with over five hours, we went through hundreds and hundreds of different types of examples and different types of things that we faced and that we'll face as part of implementing this order. And so I guess it's the question of whether you want to go through those types of examples or simply rescind your order and allow us to interpret the Governor's order and apply it.
Well, and I think I agree with Commissioner Peters. We're the ones that are going to take the flak for interpreting. Well, us, not even you guys. It's going to be the county commission. And I want to know, are we going to allow dog groomers? Are we going to allow flower deliveries? You know, those are things that we interpreted, not the Governor's orders. They weren't specific about that. And I agree, I think, I think the Governor was throwing us under the bus, if you will, with the, we didn't, I didn't close anything out. I just said people can't leave their homes. You know, but we took that up and went a little harder than I think he intended. So the things that we've been hearing about multiple times a day, car washes, dog groomers.
All of them.
The story on them.
So as I just mentioned, those, those are, in essence, anything that's non-essential is allowed. And if you go to the guidance document that I sent out last night, we specifically list out those things that we, we see from the Governor's order as remaining closed. And that includes arcade video game rooms, day of beauty salons, hair salons, nail salons, barber shops, because he specifically calls out personal services as being closed. And then for under the, and that includes like massage parlors, fitness, dance, Pilates, and yoga fall under the gyms and those categories. He specifically calls out movie theaters and large gatherings. So that would be bowling, pool halls, concert halls, amusement parks, and movie theaters. So those are the only things that we call out as being restricted, unless it's an in-retail service that's restricted to 25%. Anything else, you can do because the Governor order says it, that you can. And in fact, you've got to apply the social distancing, which was very similar, if you recall, back to your original order, which was the social distancing requirement. So we're trying to get back to where we were at a month ago, and we've tried to apply his order as levelly as we could interpret it and have some consistency, unless we just say that, apply only to the things that he specifically mentions, which is pretty limited.
I got you. Okay. All right, Commissioner Long.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I listened very carefully to the Governor's news conference, and I listen very carefully when each one of you speak because I respect everyone that's on this commission with me. I think there's reasons why we have the form of government that we do. This is not the first time that we have felt collectively like, you know, Tallahassee threw us under the bus, the legislature, the Governor, sometimes it's the feds. The fact of the matter is, though, there are seven of us that are public policy people. And I venture to say that there's probably not one of us that don't agree with Commissioner Peters or you, Madam Chair. Guess what? I've got my own list of what I think is essential, and it does not comport with what, what the, what the Governor thinks. But we are where we are, and we have delegated our authority for moving our county forward to the county administrator and the sheriff. And I know Barry is not an attorney, but the sheriff is. And I think at some level, we cannot all be involved in what we think when we're trying to stay within the confines of the law. So, you know, I love to do yoga. I do it every morning. Guess what? I do it in my living room. Same with dancing. Rick and I love to dance. Guess what? We dance here, too. But if the issue is about socializing, and so I'd just like to see us not try and pick apart every single thing. I think we have certainly gotten an earful via the email, phone calls, and text messages about how our citizens are feeling about the constraints we're living in. And none of us like it. It just is where we are, and we're doing the best that we know how to do. So we could spend all day long picking apart, I want my nails done, you know? I'd like to get a pedicure, but I can't do that. My male family friends would like to get a haircut. We can't do that either. So again, I think we need to be guided by our county administrator and our sheriff, and I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luckily, I don't have to worry about the hair thing, Commissioner Long. Everything. But yeah, we're already hearing about, certainly I'm hearing from folks that want the hair salons open. It's been several weeks, and I'm hearing about that. But I actually think the Governor took a good approach, a good incremental approach in this. The lack of specificity is a continuing problem, and it leaves us to interpret. I do want to thank Bob and Barry and the whole team. I think that the guidance document helps a lot. And looking at that number five that actually kind of specifies those businesses that will remain, you know, closed per the Governor's order, and we have to unfortunately still do some interpretation. I think it's a great first step to get a lot of our businesses back in operation, even with the 25% limit on some of them. So I'm going to support this today. I do have a question on the testing aspect, if we could. I think it's good information, Barry, in your meeting this morning, that our community needs to hear what's happening on testing and it's positive info. But I do have a couple of questions on the testing. If, Madam Chair, if we could just do a real brief overview of how we're moving forward on testing. I have a couple of questions after that.
I think that's good. Dr. Cho, do you want to?
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to. So as we discussed in our morning meetings, we are looking to increase our testing. I think part of, as we ease some of the social distancing aspects and do reopen, I think testing as well as other things like contact tracing is going to be important. So in terms of our community testing, we're going to continue. We've met this week with community partners such as Advent, Bay Care, the community centers. We're looking to partner and expand more community testing sites. I think we may start getting more sites as early as next week, and we're certainly going to communicate that to the community user, using our PIOs and our communication channels. But again, our goal is going to continue to be enhancing as much testing as we can here in our community.
So, Madam Chair, a question I had on that, looking at the Governor's presentation yesterday. I want to be clear on some of the definitions we're using. He mentions walk-up testing being available in Broward, Duval, Hillsborough. Are we going to have walk-up testing as he's defining it? And what does he mean by walk-up testing? Does it mean you don't need an appointment? Or can you explain that, Dr. Cho?
So again, I think we're finalizing some of the details with the community partners. I think it's going to be a mixture. I think some of the sites are going to test newcomers. It's not trying to accommodate anyone that would walk up or drive up. Obviously, there's going to be a component of making an appointment. But again, I think the devil's in the details. And while we work out some of the enhancement of our testing sites, we're going to get to get that message across. But we will have sites where we will test both those with symptoms and those without symptoms.
Okay, and, and so I would kind of like some clarity on what he means by walk-up because Pinellas is not in that group. And if we're actually providing that same access, I just want our folks to understand that. I think the appointment aspect also might limit folks' involvement. I've heard from some constituents who are asking, well, why don't I, why do I need an appointment where apparently from what they're reading, they think they don't need one, say, in Hillsborough County? They can just walk up. So I want to be clear on what our requirements are in Pinellas County. And the last question I had was contacted by someone last night on social media who said that they were turned away at Caroline because they answered, they couldn't answer yes to enough screening questions. You know, are you over 65? Have you been compromised? Have you traveled? Is that the protocol? If you don't meet a certain threshold and you can't get the test? Or can anyone get the test regardless of that kind of screening?
Okay, so fair enough. I think that part of it is going to be, have to be well-communicated. I think there is going to be sites that are using some of the criterias and the symptomatics, whereas there's going to be other sites that will treat both the, or test both the, those with and without symptoms. Now, in terms of the walk-ups and not making the appointments ahead of time, some of these sites that we've talked to talk about a triage process, making sure that we take the questions upfront, so not necessarily the call ahead, trying to avoid any, turning anyone away. So we will have that process hopefully in place in the next week or two.
Okay. And we're talking about the enhanced testing sites. They're getting more test kits. So that will allow them to test anyone rather than those with symptoms because of their, before we had a limitation on the number of tests. Some of the community health center sites, those, you can walk up. They prefer you registered. But if you, if you walk up, then, you know, you can be seen. So they're rolling this out because they've worked with community partners to significantly enhance our testing capability, and that's what we're prepared to roll out next week. There's going to be a site up north at Carpen, but that's not going to be ready for another week. So more to come on that. But yes, a significantly enhanced testing protocol is coming soon.
Well, that's great news, and I just want to say thank you to you and the team for doing so much great work on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Peters.
Thank you. I have one other thing that I just want clarified. So under the Governor's order, it said medical services, including elective procedures, surgicals. And at the end, it says in other healthcare practitioner offices may fully reopen. So I know you said massage salons have to be closed, but in Chapter 480 of the Florida statutes covering massage practice, it includes a definition of healthcare practitioner for a massage is included in Florida statutes that a massage therapist is a healthcare practitioner. And it's also under Chapter 456, under 457, 458, 459, 460, 461, 462, all the way up to 467. So I know you said massage parlors, but based on the Governor's order for healthcare practitioner, I think you have to open those as well based on the statute's definition.
We do have, if it's medically, if it's a medical provider, and there are some medical massages that are ordered, so there's, there is a limitation on that. However, that's where we get into the definitions. I will tell you that I, we could find almost anything under his closure order where it's tied back to a medical section. We've had that in our interpretations up to now. You know, we can certainly look at that, but that's a little bit more difficult one. But we can look at it.
Yeah, well, it's in statute, and as long as it's a definition in statute, I think they've got a legal case that they're supposed to be open. And I still would ask that you consider the others. I won't get into it again, but many yoga studios are storefronts. They're not gyms. They're not fitness centers. He specifically said gym and fitness centers, and those are storefronts. I just, that's the last I'll say about it. But I would really hope that you'd consider being more flexible on that. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
This is, this is important, Commissioner, because you got to read the whole thing. Is it says, as you said, or other healthcare practitioners, and it says that they may be open to perform procedures and procedures. And this is where we're getting into this, is that, again, we get into this where you can allow somebody for a therapeutic relaxation massage. There's a whole lot of people that have a lot of concern about this personal contact and touch. So if we say, okay, well, you don't have, you don't have a medical need, is that you just want a relaxation massage, and you go to a massage therapist, go to Massage Navy or whatever, just for a relaxation massage, but you can't go get your nails done. Tried to provide some common sense and some equity in this because then we're going to hear, well, I don't have a referral from a doctor, a chiropractor. It's not for medical purposes. It's not in conjunction with the fact that I got a C spine issue. It's just because I want a relaxation massage. So if we just cartwatch, open that up, then what do we do with the people that say, well, I want to get my nails done? So if I can get touched and get breathed on and everything else in a massage place, but I can't get my haircut, I can't get my nails done, I can't do, I can't get my hair braided and all the other stuff, this is what we're going to hear. So we're trying to provide just, this is tough, impossible in some. And one of the things, I've said this 1,000 times, the only thing in this process I know for sure is who's bad at you. And so it changes. And so we're trying to, again, we have really tried to be as absolutely narrow and consider all the orders in this. I don't know how you get there with therapeutic massage, relaxation massage, but all those people throughout Pinellas County who have hair salons, nail salons, hair braiding and all that, they're trying to make a living, is that they say, well, you can go get a massage? That's not fair.
Well, for some people, a massage is a medical necessity, or it is ordered by a, by a doctor.
And we said that, Commissioner, and you're fine with it. If it's in a chiropractic office, or if they want to open because a physician...
If it's in a chiropractic office, or if they want to open because a physician has referred them for medical purposes, the only thing we're saying is what you can't do is just that general relaxation therapeutic massage. Open for those, they want to open for anything else and everything else and it's medical. Go ahead.
I do think that we we went through this. Obviously, there's going to be another example that's going to come up. We're going to, we're trying to listen and be open at the same time, you know.
I only brought it up because it's in statute. The only reason I brought it up is because that's in statute. Nail salons are not in statute as a health practitioner, so that's the only reason why I bring it up. And and I think they've got, I do think they have a legal stand on that one because it's in statute as a health practitioner.
Look at it.
Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Eggers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was just, I think probably some of the clarification for us going forward, whether it's our residents, for our residents, and whether it's for our assistants or for us or anybody who's asking to know those areas that are definitively highlighted as not being able, that have to be closed. Those those need to be highlighted and put down so that we can refer to it. And then have another list that you're saying, and these are the ones that we're interpreting as being closed as well. And I mean, you guys, it may not, it may be difficult to do, but for us, I think it makes it a little easier for us to reference any kind of, well, when we have any of these conversations, to be able to reference it. And I, you know, we've got, we've gotten calls on some of these already. I mean, I got a call yesterday on the on tanning salon, and I mentioned it to you. And tanning salon, the interpretation was that's okay because there's obviously no interaction between people. But it says day and beauty spa services are not allowed. So I would say in parentheses, tanning salon accepted or something, because we just got to be clear. And and if it's, it says massage, you put in here unless directed by a medical provider, and you guys can look at that other issue that Commissioner Peters brought up. But I mean, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, I don't want to be hearing from people saying, well, you all interpreted it this way, and in Hillsborough, they interpreted it another way. There are some things that we're going to interpret. I get that. We just need to know which ones they are and which ones are absolutely definitively pointed out. That would be helpful, helpful for me, so going forward. And, you know, there's, there's, there's a few here that, you know, maybe I don't need to go over them all today, but people have called in on. And I just, you know, again, want to be crystal clear when we leave here. I sent you something yesterday on the daycare centers and the ability to, you know, some of these, they're 10 per room. Some of these daycare facilities have large rooms, but that, I'm assuming that doesn't matter.
It's in the governor's order.
That's a, that's a specific order from the governor. That's not an interpretation on our part. So I just want to make sure that we're clear because I, you know, what makes sense to me, and you said it, Sheriff, what makes sense to us, that's not the guiding principle, you know? It's what is said in the order. So that one, for instance, doesn't have interpretation. I want to make sure that our daycare center that we need more of them. And many of them are staying closed because they can't afford the 10 per room model. Their their rooms are huge, and they could have 15 in there easily. But we're saying because it's a room and it's in the order, it's a no. Well, that needs to be clearly stated to these folks. And I, you know, again, I got somebody calling me about community centers, and I'm assuming community centers are closed. Even if they can socially distance, they're closed. I don't see it on here, but I'm assuming they're closed.
No, why would community centers be closed?
Only because they're a congregation of a whole lot of people. So you're saying community.
Yeah, no. And what you're asking for, unfortunately, you can't, you said you want clarity and you want it to be clear.
Yeah, I do.
You can't be clear with mud, and that's what they gave us. They gave us a bucket of mud. And when we asked yesterday for additional guidance, additional clarity, you know what we got out of the governor's office? No, you're stuck with it. You figure it out, we're not giving you anything. So the same response we got last time. Okay, everything here, everything here.
Commissioner, we can pull out, we'll do our best to pull out exactly what you said. Here's, and we'll, and we'll cite back, here's what the the governor's order says. I've got a different document, which is ZPQ that talks about that. And I've got a different document, which is his presentation, 47-page presentation, and he says some different things in there. So we can, we can try to align those to where we can see these are specifically what he said, and then here's the way we're interpreting that, try to try to give clarity to what you're looking for. But it is, it is very difficult because as long as we spent on this yesterday, there's going to be something else that comes up that doesn't fit within a clear category, and we're going to have to interpret it, you know?
Again, so just so I'm clear right now, there's this line on here that says any other is non-essential services are allowed to operate subject to the 25%. So Sheriff, I said community centers, they're not on this list, so they're allowed to operate, and they have to meet, taking the social distancing of 25%. Yes?
I don't see a problem with that. I don't see a problem with that, you know, at all.
Okay.
Again, we're trying to be, yeah, I don't see a problem. It's just like, so as an example, you know, country clubs that have food service, as long as they abide by in their food service area, they abide by the 25%. And if allowed, they put a tent outside that would be seating, and they can put as many people as they want outside on the back patio covered by the tent as long as there's no ordinances prohibited. So as long as it's six feet apart, etc. So, yeah, I mean, all these things is is that, again, we really just tried to do it so that people would know what the no is and everything else seems to be okay. And I can tell you from an enforcement standpoint, because really what should matter to everybody from an enforcement standpoint is is that unless it's on that no list, I don't care. And and they can do whatever they want because we got to move everybody forward.
Social distancing. But they still, but they still, it's very important. It's very important to everybody to still understand if they're an essential service or a non-essential service. And that they're going to have to learn if they don't know already, and I'm sure most of them do. And if they're a non-essential service and they're not on this list, then they're open. People like deep fishing and tour operations, community centers that we just talked about, all of those are now open subject to the 25% limitation because they were deemed a non-essential service before.
Correct, they were non-essential, and there's, there's a whole bunch, you know, quite honestly, that really, I'll be honest with you, okay? And straight with a with a community, we're probably pushing the envelope on it, but we're trying to apply common sense to this and a reality. So as an example, one of the things that probably doesn't fit, I'm just going to tell you, it probably doesn't fit because when you read it, what can be opened? It says in-store retail establishments may open storefronts. So anything that's non-essential, what the governor said, and I'm reading it, black and white, in-store retail establishments may open storefronts. Well, guess what that's not? That isn't mobile dog grooming. But you know what? Mobile dog groomers, go for it, okay? People need to get their dogs cleaned. People, mobile, in-store retail sales is not even dog grooming in a retail, but go for it, please, everybody. Go get your dogs groomed. Same thing with car washes. In-store retail sales isn't car washes, but please, everybody, get in line, your cars washed. We are trying to make all of this happen the best we can with this bucket of mud that they gave us.
Okay, okay, well, thank you, thank you for now. Appreciate it, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal?
So I sense everybody's frustration, but I want to speak up and say thank you for the common sense and thank you for the practical application. I think having the no list is very descriptive for folks. And through all of this whole COVID crisis, we're trying to interpret, but we're trying to provide safe guidelines for as many people as possible. So I know how difficult it is. Like, it's been said, we're all being reached out to and asked questions and asked to interpret, but we are doing the best that we can. And I really want to thank Barry and the sheriff because I know you guys are throwing up the balls all day long. You're trying to provide interpretation and be fair and also have the ability to enforce it. So thank you.
Well, ditto on that, and I just wanted to say that the clarification that you just gave, Sheriff, was helpful. If you're not on the no list, then go for it within guidelines.
Absolutely.
You know, I've been searching around for my copy of the governor's order, and I can't find it. Did he mention massage in there at all along with personal services? I could swear I saw it.
But what he, what he says, and I'm looking at his guidance document, it says, bars, nightclubs, and gyms remain closed during phase one while personal care services, such as barber shops and salons with close, close contact should remain closed. The portions of businesses with onsite retail may open at 25%. So you can see it's very, very broad. On our state call yesterday, we asked for further clarification. We were told that the state's attorney, the county attorney, the county commission, the city councils must interpret the order, there will be no further guidance provided.
Okay.
Sorry.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, I want to, I just wanted to get to two things. One, get back to the the question I asked you about the daycare centers and the information that I sent you. Did we, did we get a hold of the state agency that had said that there were some things in our court for making decisions? Did we, you know, did we look at that, Barry?
We tried to look at hundreds of examples like that and got zero guidance from the state. They're not providing any guidance on this. And that one, they specifically put in an order limiting the class size to nine plus the teacher.
All right, well, again, I'll, I thought I sent you something yesterday that said that there's a state agency that said those kinds of decisions are left up to the county commission. And I said, I don't think so. We've never discussed that before. I I would suspect.
Okay, if you're, well, I'll look that up. I didn't, I didn't take it that way, the question. I know we were just texting back and forth or emailing. So I'll, I'll run that up and ask the state agency if there's any further guidance on that, if I can get a hold of someone.
I think the daycare centers are going to be under the jurisdiction of the license board.
Absolutely, but we'll track that down to make sure that nothing's changed on that, but I certainly haven't seen anything.
Yeah, and could we just take a couple of minutes and maybe talk just again specifically about restaurants and, you know, getting into what, how we're, how we're going to approach restaurants? I didn't see in here the the time issue, or maybe it's in a different place, but in your, in your document that you sent us yesterday.
So there's, so the time limitation was actually an order that I did way over a month ago, and that was restriction to alcohol sales at 10:00. And if we recall back, we did that specifically because of the bar-type atmosphere. Well, under the governor's order, he closes bars. And he then provides for social distancing and the 25% depending upon whether it's outdoor or indoor seating. As part of, if you accept the recommendations today, I will rescind that local order. So there'll be no time restriction because, in fact, if people are social distancing, they're keeping in concurrence with the governor's order, there's no reason to have the time limitation.
And I'm assuming that, I'm just assuming that that means that their their food facilities or kitchens and all that are still open. You mean, you know, you don't want, you don't want to start looking like and feeling like a bar again. I mean.
Correct, well, the bar area is actually closed. So the bar, a bar in a restaurant is is closed under the governor's order. And so it's just the dining area. And so if they're having a burger and a beer at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at night versus 9 o'clock, really doesn't matter, it's still required to be social distanced, and we wouldn't see the problem. The order that we had that restricted it till 10 o'clock became kind of irrelevant when the governor closed restaurants, you know, and bars. And so we haven't really acted on that because of that action.
Okay, so that time limit will be rescinded. Okay.
Barry, I had, can I just respond to that? I had a request yesterday from the city of St. Pete about allowing restaurants to stay open and serve alcohol, but only if the, if the kitchen was still open. So they can't close the kitchen at 10 o'clock and continue letting people drink until two or three because that, because of the fairness with the bars being closed. I mean, I think that's a pretty simple solution.
We could, I guess that's a point we should discuss. I mean, the the issue obviously is that we were trying to keep the the bar crowded. But if they're, if they're required to social distance, whether they're eating or whether they're having a drink, does that matter?
Well, it matters to the bars that are closed. It's kind of unfair competition to the bars that are closed if they can close their kitchen and still serve alcohol, and the bars can't even be open. I mean, that was the point that they were trying to make, so. I think it's a minor clarification, but fairness, maybe we should do that.
But the bars have to be closed under the governor's order, so it's not really competition at that. I'm not arguing, I'm just saying it, they're, they're not really competition at that point because the governor specifically closed the the bars. It's that, and he defines that at 50% of your sales derive from.
But I'm talking about within a restaurant that serves alcohol. Can people continue to just sit there after the kitchen's closed at a dining table and drink? That's the, that's the question.
If I rescinded the order, then yeah, they could. But but they, but and from an enforcement standpoint, I mean, it's really the issue of the social distance. In other words, are the tables, no more than 10 and six feet apart? You know, and I've had that question. I don't know that we want the sheriff's office or police departments determining whether somebody's eating or not. And, you know, it just adds to the, to one more restriction, but it could be done.
But the, it seems, it just seems to me that that a reasonable time limit takes care of that, you know, even if it's midnight or something. But you start talking about two, three, four, or two or three in the morning, it's a totally, I mean, I think the shutdown time is probably makes sense, make it midnight and you're done with it. And then you, and midnight and keep the kitchen open and you're done. You know, you don't have to, then you don't have to get into all splitting the hairs for the sheriff and all the the police departments and and all that. I mean, it gives them a little bit more time because they're only at 25% capacity. So gives them a little bit more time to sell some food and some alcohol, but not, not weigh in, you know, not, I don't know. There seems to be some reasonableness there that.
We, again, we could do that, you could do that through an order of mine just to your direction, or we could modify the order that's before you if that's something you wanted to include in.
I'm comfortable with you doing it myself.
There was an example, I don't know if it was you, Barry, or the sheriff, that brought up about a business asking for expansion of their, of their open area to include perhaps a tinted, tinted area. And just wondered what our thinking is on that and what the issue is there, so.
Yeah, the governor's order, yeah. Well, the governor's order is very specific. Outdoor seating is allowed, and there's not a capacity limitation. It simply has to adhere to the social distancing guidelines. That the other issues around whether you can put a tent out or tables in the street or whatever is really a local zoning issue. And so we would defer to the local zoning for them to determine what can occur with that. We would simply enforce it from the social distancing aspect as defined by the governor's order.
I can tell you, Commissioner, I've heard from a number of cities in specific that they are planning on street closures, all the restaurants to expand out into the sidewalks, into the streets. And I can tell you several have those plans, of course, and that would be absolutely fine under the order.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for now? Yes, Commissioner Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quickly, I agree with your take on the alcohol service. As long as the kitchen's open, that seems to make sense to me without getting too much in the weeds. Wanted to ask Barry two questions. One, you may have hit on this already, but this pretty much aligns fairly closely with what Hillsborough's already done.
That's correct. Again, I haven't got into the details of it, but Hillsborough did rescind their local ordinance, and what it stated is they're just following the governor's order.
Okay, so Hillsborough to Pinellas should be pretty consistent. The the next question I had, I know in some, for some reason, I changed my Wi-Fi network, Brian, so I lost most of the commission, so I'm seeing four people. So I'm not seeing Commissioner Seal. But Commissioner Seal had mentioned the mask issue, and I mentioned that to you as well, Barry. What's the recommendation now that we're opening back up in terms of just basic masks for asymptomatic people? And I'll share with you all, many of you all know my daughter works at Publix, so she's wearing a mask as an employee, but the folks that go in there are not. So, you know, at the retail establishments, what are we thinking in terms of just a basic mask requirement, Barry?
We don't have anything within our order. We we certainly have been in the discuss. We put out as part of this is some of the recommendations. The governor specifically says that senior citizens and individuals with medical conditions are strongly encouraged to stay in a home or limit exposure. If you wanted to do something, you know, further than. If you wanted to do something, you know, further than that in terms of safety guidelines, we also put in that you should continue to operate and adhere to the safety guidelines by the CDC and OSHA. If you want to do something more with, you know, considering masks or things when you're going into a an indoor place, we could, we could add that to as kind of guidance or recommendations.
Well, I would support at least a recommendation on that. But I am interested in what Commissioner Seal, who I can't see, was wanting to do with that.
Commissioner Seal.
I would say for now, I'd like to follow what Barry just recommended, which is to strongly suggest that people wear masks when they go into an indoor location. And then monitor to see if it's working and if people are following our safety guidelines. I hate to get so far as to say we require that you take a mask, but I do think we need to use strong language in guidance. Thank you, Commissioner Walsh.
I would agree.
I think, Madam Chair, just, just a definition of the different mask types. They don't need an N ninety-five, just a basic mask. So if we can include that kind of information in there, I think that'd be helpful.
I think Barbara is working on that.
Okay.
Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, so it's in the governor's order that you recommend, that he recommends you wear masks. It's in the CDC guidelines that they recommend to wear masks. I don't know that we have to go any farther other than that because it's already in the governor's order. But I wanted to go back to the restaurants and serving liquor. You know, the governor's order said that a four cup is allowed under their order, but they have to have fifty percent of their sales has to be food. So, and most restaurants close around ten or eleven o'clock. I don't know that we have to go any farther than that. Because they have to maintain the fifty percent of food. So I don't think they're going to stay open as a bar when they can only have twenty-five percent capacity. And of course, if the city of St. Pete wants to do that, the city of St. Pete can do that. But I don't think as a county, we need to do that. Just my thought.
Well, I can see a restaurant staying open later to get that extra money that they get from bar sales because they do make more on that than they do on the food. And I just want to put some parameters around that to be fair to the bars. That's all. So.
Are we taking a vote or is this just consensus? Because you wouldn't have consensus for me on that one.
Okay, fine. Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we've kind of covered the waterfront on a bunch of different issues today. And I'm, I don't have strong feelings on the restaurant bar. I think we don't have fairness as far as what business is closed and what business is not. That's just the way we are in, in our world today. So I think the fewer regulations that we can put on these things, you know, until a problem develops, I think that's the better way to go. But Barry or Sheriff, when we're communicating back to the governor's office, if there's another order, if he changes this order next week or in a couple of weeks. If we could offer the suggestion to actually list out the things and not refer to the Miami day this or the Palm Beach that. It's starting to look like an IRS codebook as opposed to a simple executive order. And I just think it's, if it's clear as mud for our sheriff and our attorneys and our administrator, think what it looks like for the average citizen. And so just as we're communicating with the governor's office, I, I just think he needs to be as clear as possible. We all want to do the right thing. We all want to follow the rules. We all want to do the right thing for our health. And that's why clear communication is so critical right now. Thank you.
And I'm fine with not changing the order to do the thing with restaurants. I think if it becomes a problem, then Barry can do something and the sheriff. Any, yes, Commissioner Eggers.
Just a, just a comment. I wanted to make sure that I, just to, I guess reiterate to our, all of our residents. You know, we, I, I know that Barry and his team are looking at putting together numbers and thing, you know, the different, the different metrics out there that we're going to be following closely during this month. As we do this, two weeks from now, we'll have some, we'll be watching these numbers as we go. And I think towards the end of the month, we'll be seeing some trends. And I think there's going to be more testing. There's going to be more numbers to look at. There's going to be more things for us to consider. And again, you know, everybody, you know, the liberties are coming back and it's great. And I think everybody, all of us are happy about that. And all of the residents, many of the residents are as well. But I just want to make sure that residents, you know, these are, there's a lot of people who are very scared and nervous about this. And so to the point about wearing masks when you go in the grocery store, no, you're not required to do that. But, you know, there are people in that grocery store that are very nervous about it and they have to go to the grocery store. So try to be, all of us try to be as respectful as we can for each other. And I know some people have different opinions about this whole thing. But nonetheless, we still call on you as, as human beings to be that way for each other during this time. And it's going to, we're going to have some time to transition. We're going to transition to this new normal. And for new bit, and for the businesses that are out there, you know, you're going to have to figure out what those residents are really going to be looking for when they come into your store. You know, they're going to want more cleanliness. They're going to want you to make sure that you only have twenty-five percent capacity, that you only have three in the store. You're allowed twelve and you've got people standing outside. It's going to be important to residents. So, you know, these are, these are just different times. And, and we just, you know, just asking for everybody to continue working together. You know, to, to make sure that we acknowledge everybody's thoughts on this and that it's not just for themselves. And I would, I don't want to even think about going backwards is what I'm saying. So we're moving forward this way. Let's do it carefully. Let's be smart about it. And we'll watch the numbers closely so that we can make sure that we're, you know, staying safe above all else. So anyway, just wanted to make sure I said that before we finish. Thank you.
Yes, Sheriff.
Yeah, Commissioner, can I just use this as a platform to communicate with the public? I'm getting a lot of questions on this. I know you are getting some as well. As far as charters are concerned, boat charters are concerned. Is, I just want to remind everybody that the executive order that was issued mandating that there only be ten people on a vessel and that they stay fifty feet apart, only upon recreational vessels. So that limit on ten does not apply to charters, fishing vessels and those others. I would say that the social distancing requirements would still apply of keeping people six feet apart or groups of ten. But as far as I'm concerned, and I can tell you as far as our marine enforcement is concerned, in the Gulf and coastal waterways, the limit of ten people on a boat, it only applies to recreational and not charters. I get a lot of questions on that. So thanks for letting me get that out there.
Yep. Anybody else before we take public comment? Yes, Barry, did you?
One, one final, you know, comment just to consider. And it sounds like, you know, you're going to take the recommendations. But the, the key to going off of the governor's order also is because we believe it's going to change. You know, and if it changes on Thursday, then, you know, we'll have to evaluate that. And, and that's, it's going to be key on that is where he goes with how long phase one. He didn't put a time period on it. And, and he's got a couple of orders that expire at different times. So there'll be constant communication. We'll, we'll take this up each week. But we do believe that there'll be changes regarding his order and interpretations of that, you know, ongoing.
Right. Okay. Brian, what do we have for public comment today?
Madam Chair, first of all, do we, we have two separate resolutions. Do we want to do comment all at one time upfront? Okay. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on this agenda item, please hit star nine on your telephone. Or do the raise hand button virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, at this time, it looks like we have four members of the public that wish to speak. Our first member of the public is Jennifer Harmon. Ms. Harmon, if you can give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and then you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Harmon, H A R M O N. And my address, business address is one one five three Main Street in Dunedin. I just wanted to say thank you so much for clarifying pet grooming. No one has said those words. And I literally cried when I heard Barry Burton say those words. So I just wanted to thank you that you're actually acknowledging us and that you're letting us open. I'm getting teary eyed now that you're letting us open on Monday. Thank you so, so very much. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you for everything you all are doing for us.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker I do not have a name for. If you'll go ahead and introduce yourself, give us your first, last name, address. And you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I guess that's me. My name is Hillary Hoag, H I double L A R Y. H O G U E. And my phone number is two three nine six eight two four two four nine. And I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed that nothing concerning the elderly community was brought up in anything that you've spoken about. Nothing about testing, besides hearing that staff members are being tested. The residents aren't. And I am, I am speaking to you on behalf of a woman who is in a fraudulent guardianship. I'm sure Sheriff, you know about Genite Dirse. She is lying in a hospital bed as we speak with COVID nineteen on her deathbed. And her nephew, her only relative in this country, has not been able to speak with her. I have contacted Ken Burke, the judge's office, Judge Rondelino. I'll be calling the chief judge Kennedy. But I am begging with, with the people that I am speaking to to somehow initiate a three-minute phone conversation between this taxpaying woman who is a business owner in St. Pete with her nephew, so he can speak to her in Lithuanian and say, I love you and I'm praying for, for, for you. Time is of the essence. She might not be alive tomorrow. We, we know the gravity of this disease with the elderly. And doctors, you know better, better than I do. Her name is Genite, G E N Y T E. Her last name is Dirse, D I R S E. You have my phone number and we talk about humanity. We are not talking about a car or a massage or a pedicure or a manicure. We are talking about a human being, a resident of your community. So I am begging you, you have the power to do something to help this woman get a call in with her nephew before she dies. Thank you so much for being there and stay healthy.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have, it looks like five remaining speakers. We had a couple of hands go up. Our next speaker is Mr. Ken Copeland. Mr. Copeland, if you give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hi, Ken Copeland, Treasure Island, Florida. Couple of comments. First off, I think the caveats are ridiculous. And it just doesn't make sense to try to police them and enforce them. It seems like it's making the sheriff and his crew life absolutely hell or, or will. Because, for example, if I'm a restaurant and I know my kitchen has to stay open, then I'm going to leave one guy back there after ten with a deep fryer and my kitchen's open for mozzarella sticks and wings. I think it's going to create animosity between businesses and, well, he's doing this, why can't I do this? And I, I don't think that's good. So being fair is one thing, but being realistic is another. It, it needs to be cut and dry. That stuff doesn't make any sense. You know, the capacity and how many drinks, is there going to be an officer at every restaurant and every bar making sure that's enforced? It's just too much wishful thinking on my part, on y'all's part. Secondly, the pet grooming should have been open long ago. If pets don't get groomed frequently enough, depending on the breed, they can get mats and it's painful for them. That's not something that's cosmetic, like a massage or a nail salon or a barber salon. You know, we can go without a haircut and not necessarily be in pain, whereas animals can't. So some of these things to me just seem like common sense. And I know that there's orders from the governor and whatnot. But there just has to be more common sense there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Dylan Hubbard. Mr. Hubbard, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Dylan Hubbard. My first name is D Y L A N. My last name is Hubbard, H U B B A R D. My business address is one seven zero Johns Pass Boardwalk, Madeira Beach, Florida, three three seven oh eight. And I just wanted to comment and ask, talk about charter fishing. But I want to thank the sheriff for explicitly making it clear prior to my comment. And I want to thank Commissioner Eggers for bringing it up earlier as well. And thank the entire commission for allowing us to get back to business. Our family business has been operating for nearly a hundred years. This is the longest closure in that history. And I couldn't be more happy to get back out in the water with extreme caution and precautions and distancing in place and limited capacities to keep everybody as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Carl Dobbins. Mr. Dobbins, if you'll go ahead and unmute, give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Carl Dobbins. I'm at five 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 sixty nine at Abin, St. Pete Beach. And my concern is more over kind of a combination of the beaches being open and also with the restaurants that can serve alcohol. The ones that do have the gross sales of fifty percent more that are food. And so with the beaches being open, I'd like to see the economy of the beach also open as well. And beach by beach, everything's different. St. Pete, St. Pete Beach is, probably Sheriff knows, it's part of that whole private and public. It's mostly private. But with the hotels and the restaurants, are they going to be, are we going to be able to have walk-up bar service and get a closed container? Because it, it does say not on premise. So are you going to be able to walk up to a bar restaurant and grab a drink and go back out to the sand? Where it is a private beach, obviously not the Upham and Passag grill because there's no alcohol allowed on those beaches. But with the parts that are private, are you going to be able to, are we going to be able to absorb the economic benefit of having people get drinks from those restaurants?
Thank you. Sheriff, do you have an idea about that? I don't.
Yeah, it, it's just going to be as it was before, you know, if, if one of the hotels has a walk-up and you can, as an example, you could order burgers and beers from the walk-up on the beach. And you want to just walk up and get a beer and take it to your chair sitting on the beach as long as you're socially distanced. I don't see a problem with that. I think the only, again, the only thing that are closed, and, and I'll be clear since we're not, is that nothing's closed. Governor didn't close anything. And he keeps saying that. And that's what causes grief. But is that he suspended the alcohol sales for anything that is more than fifty percent sales. So no bars closed. So i- if they sell alcohol, they sell liquor, they sell beer, wine, et cetera. And especially those on the beach, is that you can walk up to it because virtually all of them have some sort of food. Like the guy said, mozzarella sticks or chicken wings. But you want to get your beer and take it to the beach as long as it's allowed on the beach anyway. Enjoy. Have fun.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we have four remaining speakers. Our next speaker is Beth, no last name. Beth, if you can give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. And you'll have to unmute, please.
Hello, I've un-muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Beth Tyber. Oh, thank you. I own Piccadilly Pet Salon in St. Pete, Florida. And I currently
Beth, we're, we're having a very hard time hearing you. I think your, your internet connection is not adequate.
I want to thank you for allowing us to open our.
Madam Chair, I might have to have her come back in on the phone line. I don't think her broadband connection was, was good enough for the meeting. Hang on, we'll go to the next caller. Our next speaker is Matt. I'm going to, I'm going to butcher this, Letteler. If you can go ahead and give us your first and last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Yes, this is Matt Lettler, the advocacy manager at the St. Petersburg Chamber of Commerce. Matt, M A T T, Lettler, L E T T E L L E I R. And St. Pete Chamber Commerce is at one hundred Second Avenue North, Suite one fifty in St. Petersburg. First of all, thank you all very much for all of your hard work on this, especially Administrator Burton and Sheriff Waltieri. I did just want to make a couple of comments in regards to the massage practices. I believe I sent all of the commissioners and Administrator Burton email last night that was received from the Florida Department of Health that explicitly says that massage practices are allowed. It does not reference whether they have to be accompanied by a prescription or anything, anything like that. I think that you can make a designation between getting your nails done versus a massage therapy. I know there are some places that do both, but I think that if you, that you allow the massages, but you don't allow the nails, or the facials, or, or things like that. And plus, trust me, I have plenty of friends that would be upset with not being able to get all those services. But I think that because of, as Commissioner Peters said, the statute does place massage therapies underneath a medical statute. Also, in regards to the alcohol sales, I believe that the sheriff really just made a great point. But if you are a place that has under 50% of your sales in, are alcohol, that doesn't necessarily mean food. There are other places that do not serve food, but yet their sales are under 50% alcohol. Bookstore, there are some bookstores, there are cigar shops, things like that. So unless this body were to decide to specifically not allow those to operate, I believe under the governor's order, that with the four COP, that like the sheriff said, hey, you can go up and you can go get a burger, a fry, you can just, or you can just get a beer and walk down, especially for the off-premise consumption. So I just would like you guys to take that into account. Again, thank you all very much for all of your hard work, and we will get past this. Here for any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have three remaining speakers. Our next speaker is Walt Belcher. Mr. Belcher, if you can give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Okay, it's Walt Belcher, W-A-L-T, B-E-L-C-H-E-R, like Belcher Road, 1062 Swanee Street in Safety Harbor. And my question is a lot of confusion about what is and what isn't. If there is a no list, could it be published somewhere or posted somewhere? That's my question. If the no list, but help clear up, clear up some things for the public if you actually had a no list that was sort of definitive there.
Yes, we could do that.
Where would I find it?
That's a good question. Mr. Burton?
Following this meeting, it'll be posted to our website. We want to, you know, we wanted to have this meeting before we publish that list, considering the debate with commissioners. After that, we will publish this, and it'll be available on our website.
Okay, thanks, that's all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one remaining speaker, Ms. Lauren Heckert. Ms. Heckert, if you could give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes. And you'll have to unmute, please. Hello? Ms. Heckert?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you, yes, sir.
Hello?
Yes, sir. Can you give us your name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the, the board? Give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is Lauren Heckert. I am the Secretary Treasurer and Beach House Liaison at the Civitan Beach House. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sir, you're on a, you're on a serious delay. Are you als, do you also have the TV on in your ba, in your background?
No, I have the, my phone on. I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Oh, we can hear you, yes, sir.
Okay, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Can you give us your name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the, the board? I, I think we're having technical difficulties, Madam Chair. What I would do is, if we can go ahead and, and, Mr. Heckert, if you could turn down the volume on your phone, I think that was the issue, and I'll try to unmute you one more time.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think we're having a serious technical difficulty with that, that member of the public.
Right. And do we have any other callers, or?
That was the last speaker that wished, wished to be heard.
How about if the two people that we couldn't get through to, if they call back in, let's let them speak. But otherwise, let's close the public comment. Any comments from the board? Okay, yes, Commissioner Welch.
Question? Just, and again, you're going to get more of these calls, but are we going to handle it the same way? If there's any interpretations, a call in to the, the question, or your site, sheriff, or the tip site, and then get just clarification, like somebody said kayak rentals, and I, I'm assuming with the spirit, it's not on the list, so that would be open and available to be used. But yeah, was we going to go through the tips line for any questions on that?
Certainly, the tips line, the, the call centers remaining open, we're still getting 100 calls plus a day. I pay two tips, so they won't answer any questions. And I, again, would just suggest, as soon as we publish this list, everybody take a look at it, and do it. So kayak rentals, have fun. So I don't know what else. If everybody just looks at that list, I think it'll really clear this up. And if it's not on there, go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Welch?
Yes, I, I'm supportive of both resolutions. I was just, and I know Commissioner Peters identified that it's already in the governor's order, but I would like for us to have something that states our recommendation that folks wear those masks in public places. So wherever that would fit, I still would like to see that in our order as well.
Madam Attorney, is that okay?
Well, do you want that in the order, or do you want that in the guidance document?
Wherever it makes sense, if the board concurs, I'd just like us to make that statement. So I'm kind of asking, where, where should that be?
You can certainly add it in the order. My suggestion would be to add it into the resolution clarifying local restrictions, not the local state of emergency. If you wanted to, we could word it like, like you said, as a strong recommendation, we could certainly include it in there.
Okay, so when we get to that one, Madam Chair, if the motioner can incorporate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seal?
Yes, I just want clarity, because on the restaurant, what's the final decision? And the bars as well, and also the massage? Because I want to make sure we're all clear where this is going.
I have no problem with not changing the order for the restaurants. Just let Mr. Burton and the sheriff deal with that if it becomes a problem.
Okay, so there's going to be no time limit, anything? Because we talked about midnight, so now we're not going to do that, right? Okay. And.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And I concur with Commissioner Welch, and I want to make sure that is part of the motion and in the guidance. And finally, as a cautionary note, I just want to note that some of the states where they have opened up and allowed people to get back to the new normal, that they are seeing more cases of COVID. So I just want everyone to please be conscious and kind and respectful, and trying to make sure that you are being neighborly. And let's try to relax and loosen, but keep COVID at control. Thank you.
Sheriff Eggers?
Yeah, I, I think Commissioner Seal touched on it. And on the mask guidance, I think I was just going to ask, you're talking about referencing that as a suggestion, a strong suggestion, if you go into enclosed areas, is that what you're talking about? Like shops and rest, any, any place enclosed? That's just a suggestion. Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, anybody else? I'll entertain a motion, the first one for extending the state of emergency, is that right?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. If there are no further comments, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? All right, that was unanimous. And the second one, clarifying local restrictions.
Move approval, Madam Chair, with the caveat that we add in there recommending the wearing the mask.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welch. Any further comment? Not, please raise your, your hands to say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. It's also unanimous. Is there anything else we need to do here?
I have no, nothing further, I don't care.
Yes.
Commissioner, do you all want an overview of what's going to happen with the beaches next week?
Yeah.
Sure. Please.
I stand corrected, I forgot, Chair.
No problem. I mean, if you, if you don't, I don't care.
It's absolutely correct. He's got an implementation order, a plan for the opening of the beach. I think it'd very, be very good for the commissioners and the public to hear that.
Good. Please.
So one of the things that everybody needs to know and understand is, first and foremost, is, is that under this board's order, the beaches are closed until Monday morning at 7:00. So it's status quo this weekend. The beaches are closed from all the way at Fred Howard Park in the north part of the county, all the way down to the south. So remember, 7:00 a.m. Monday morning is when the beaches reopen. We want them to come, and we want them to enjoy the beaches, but everybody needs to know that that will be measured, and that there will be restrictions. What people need to know specifically is that groups are limited, no more than 10 people, and that individuals need to stay six feet apart from other individuals or groups. We're going to take a common sense approach to this. So if people come together, they can stay together, but no joining larger groups. So if five people rode in a car together to come to the beach, that's fine, those five people can stay together. Again, there are limits, and they can't join larger group. Make sure that these limits are followed. Give you an overview of what's going to occur. We will have over 250 deputy sheriffs on the Pinellas beaches, from Fred Howard Park and Tarpon Springs to Fort Nisoto at the southern tip of the county. These 250-plus deputies will be present from 9:00 in the morning until 8:00 p.m. every day for the foreseeable future. And these deputies are in addition to the patrol deputies ordinarily assigned to the cities and the other areas of Pinellas County. There are 213 beach access points from Sand Key to Passagill Beach. And every single, every single beach access point will be staffed by a uniformed deputy. All the deputies will be on the sand side of the access points. Some of these access points are boardwalks, some sand access, and others you get to through large parking lots. As people arrive on the beach, they're going to be reminded by the deputies of the distancing requirements. And the deputy will be responsible for ensuring distancing compliance in the sand area seaward of the access point at which the deputies reside. There'll also be additional foot patrols on the beaches, and an additional 30 deputies on ATVs patrolling the beaches. The Clearwater Police Department is going to cover Clearwater Beach proper around Pier 60. And if any assistance is needed, we have plenty of personnel to help. The Treasure Island Police Department and the Indian Shores Police Department will also provide personnel to participate in efforts in their cities. To give you some idea of the staffing, and again, this is all in addition to the patrol deputies ordinarily assigned every day. On the Dunedin Causeway, we will have nine deputies assigned just to the Dunedin Causeway. I have some indication, but I don't know for sure, that Honeymoon Island State Park may open in the next few days. If it does open, we have, will have, when it opens, 11 deputies assigned to Honeymoon Island State Park to ensure compliance. We'll have an additional 29 deputies in Indian Rocks Beach, 20 deputies in Treasure Island, an additional 35 deputies in St. Petersburg Beach. We'll have seven dedicated just to Gandy Beach. The Clearwater Police Department will have 36 personnel in and around Pier 60. And again, if necessary, we'll all help each other out. We're going to control the traffic lights at the Pinellas Bayway and Gulf Boulevard by the Don Cesar in St. Pete Beach, and the light at Passagill Way in Vina Del Mar, and in Passagill will be staffed by a deputy to ensure that traffic flows properly in and out of Passagill, and that the residents there, which there's concern about, will have easy access to their homes. All the major parking lots up and down Gulf Boulevard will also have dedicated deputies assigned patrolling those lots to ensure orderly traffic flow. We are going to ensure there's no improper side street parking in residential areas if the lots become full, and that includes Passagill. Again, where there's concern, because there's only permit street parking. Deputies will be assigned to monitor traffic on Gulf Boulevard and all the causeways and bridges leading to the beaches to ensure efficient ingress and egress to the beaches. Special attention will be given to known areas of concern, like Indian Rocks Road and West Bay Drive and Bowery Bluffs, where traffic has a tendency to back up. We're going to have over 1,000 signs posted to remind everyone of the social distancing requirements, and about 100 of those signs are very large, four feet by eight feet signs. We're going to have electronic signboards posted on the beach access bridges and along Gulf Boulevard. We also have nine marine unit boats on the water, along with one boat from Clearwater and one from Treasure Island. And these marine unit deputies and officers will patrol the Intercoastal Waterway and the Gulf of Mexico, with special attention to Clearwater Pass and Johns Pass. A number of voters have been anchoring along Clearwater Pass and using those beaches. We're also going to have our air assets up, and we'll have regular helicopter patrols to help gauge beach density and compliance. If any of the commissioners are interested in going up and seeing for yourselves in a helicopter, let me know, and we'll make those arrangements. I also plan to share unedited helicopter video with the media, so everyone can see for themselves what things look like. If the media wants to identify a single, single pool camera, I'm also open to having one camera person go up on a flight, and that can be coordinated with our Public Information Office. We're also working with the cities that have smaller beaches to ensure they are adequately patrolled, such as North Shore in St. Pete, and small beaches in Gulfport and Tarpon Springs. Anyone not following the rules, is going to be simply asked to leave the beach. If we see certain areas of the beach that exceed safe distancing and capacity requirements, people will be asked to relocate to open areas. We're going to have an unprecedented number of law enforcement officers to make sure that everyone is safe, healthy, and has a great time on the Pinellas beaches as we reopen the beaches and the businesses within the beach community. So that gives you an overview of what we're going to do, beginning on Monday. And for the foreseeable future, I'm not putting any time limit on how long we're going to do this, but I can tell you that it will for sure run 10 days. It'll be for sure into the following weekend, which is Mother's Day weekend. But I'm committed to making sure this works 110%, as I told you, and we've got the resources to do it. And I think we've got a, a plan that will be effective. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer them. And again, you're all more than welcome, of course, to come out. You want to go out in one of the boats, you want to go up in the helicopter, let me know, we'll make those arrangements.
Thank you. Anything from the board? Yes, Commissioner Seal?
Just one other thing going to the CARES. Maybe we, we talked, we heard about it on the phone call this morning, but I think it would be good to review it for the public since we have this particular meeting. And also, again, want to advocate for some home-based businesses to receive some of this funding, because they may be deducting their mortgage or having a home office. They have expenses like everybody else, and I know this may come as part of a second tier, but I think it's something that we need to definitely consider. So with that, maybe review what we've done so far on the CARES Act and the response. Thank you.
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, so there's two parts to the CARES Act funding. One is for individual assistance. That is run through 211. You can text 211, and I have, I'm having Steph get you, get the exact title, so I don't give you an incorrect where to text. So we have that, and that can provide individual assistance up to $4,000 if you've lost income, if you've lost your income due to COVID. The other program is a business assistance, primarily targeted to those businesses that were required as part of the governor's order to close. And if you've been required to close, then again, we provide up to $5,000 assistance to help bridge, you know, this time period. Both of these programs were really designed as a bridge, not as a loss of income. There's simply not enough money we received out of the federal government to do that. But what we can do is we can provide a bridge to, while you're going through unemployment, and, and getting the PPP program, which is federal assistance for businesses and things like that. So we've designed it as a bridge. If you need individual assistance, please contact 898-211, 898-211, and type in COVID CARES. That will, will start that process, an automated process. And then if you need business assistance, call the, our Small Business Assistance Center at the County Economic Development Department.
They are also going to have an online application at this.
They do. And so you could go to our website and, and, and access it from our, um, website.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, just Barry, and I heard this morning, uh, in the, in your, in your meeting, that, uh, you'll be tracking those numbers really closely over the next week or two, um, so that we can start to, um, put out some expectation for that next round. Uh, for instance, there, there, there will be money available for expanding each of them a little bit or not, uh, depending on how, how this thing goes, um, so that, because I, I think Commissioner Seal brought a good point with small businesses. And I mentioned yesterday about new businesses that have been opened up and they're no different. They put up, they put a whole lot of money in, in, in savings into, into their business. So I think, you know, we're going to look at different aspects in phase two, but just kind of keep track of those numbers so we can let people know how it's going. Thank you.
We'll provide a report at each commission meeting on how the program is going. And also, we're in the process of forming at your direction, the Phase Two, uh, program. And so we're going to reach out to individuals to help serve on that committee, uh, to where we can come together. And, and if there in fact is funds remaining, which we believe there will be, um, but if there's fund remaining, of how best to, to spend those dollars.
Can I suggest for that, for the business, um, grants that we have somebody from the nonprofit world on there?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll reach out. I'll, I'll send something out and, and seek all of your ideas, um, as we put that together.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner, uh, if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, Lauren Heckert and Beth, the two people who had communication problems before are back on. They're still on their original Zoom connections, but I thought you may want to give them one more opportunity.
Uh, sure.
Right, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Heckert. Uh, if you could go ahead and unmute and, uh, try to give it another shot here.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sir, I, I'm sorry, no, we, we're having trouble again with you. Um.
Is, what about, what about now?
You're going to have to turn down the broadcast that you have coming from somewhere else in your home. Sir, can you hear me? Mr. Heckert?
Hello?
We're still having tons of. Yes, now we can, sir. Can you hear me?
Sir, I'm sorry, no, we, we're having trouble again with you. Um.
Yeah, we're, we're having the same issues, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. Uh, we'll try Beth one more time. It's our, the second speaker. Uh, Beth, if you could go ahead and unmute and, uh, you'll have three minutes, please. Hello, Beth? Yeah, I still think both speakers are having technical difficulty, Madam Chair. I apologize.
Well, maybe we suggest that they, uh, either send us an email or call in on the phone line next time or whatever.
Okay.
There's anything else? Well, I guess we are adjourned then. Thank you very much.